Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education Reorganization Meeting. My name is Shawn Boyce. I am the chairman pro tem. Until such time, the board awards or appoints a board president for the upcoming school year. The first order of business is to report out on the result of elections. From November 15th, November 5th, 2019, English Town Borough Representative Diana Capiello received 4,762 votes. There were also 49 write-ins. Howell Township Representative Mark Parisi received 5,889 votes. There was also 69 write-ins in Howell. And Farmingdale Borough Representative Kathy Lavin received 5,645 votes. There were 39 write-ins there as well. Also, tonight, in accordance with the action taken by the board in September to fill the vacancy of the Freehold Township seat, Ms. Elizabeth Higley is here with us tonight, and she will also receive the oath of office. So, I'd like to invite the newly-elected members of the Board of Education up to take the oath of office. Ms. Capiello, if you'd join me? Just raise your right hand and recite the oath, please.
I, Diana Capiello, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the government established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Diana Capiello, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a board of education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A 12-1, and that I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Mr. Parisi, if you could join us, please.
I, Mark Parisi, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Mark Parisi, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a board of education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A 12-1, and that I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Ms. Lavin, please join us.
I, Kathy Lavin, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the government established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Kathy Lavin, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a board of education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A 12-1, and that I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
And Ms. Higley.
I, Elizabeth Higley, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Elizabeth Higley, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a board of education, and I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19:4-1, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A 12-1, and I will faithfully and impartially and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Okay, I will now take the roll call of the newly-formed Board of Education. Mr. Acetola.
Here.
Ms. Sutera.
Here.
Mr. Bruno.
Here.
Ms. Capiello.
Here.
Ms. Higley.
Here.
Ms. Lavin.
Here.
Mr. Messinger.
Here.
Mr. Moses.
Yes.
Mr. Parisi.
Here.
Thank you. So, the next item on tonight's agenda is the election of the president. So, board, I will open the floor for nominations. A second is not necessary, and then, when it becomes apparent that there are no further nominations, I will ask for a motion to close nominations. If there is only one name nominated, that motion will also include instructions for the board secretary to cast a vote, a unanimous vote through the single nominee. If not, I'll ask for a second to close the nominations, and then we will proceed, this is if there are multiple nominations, in the order in which they were nominated, to take a roll call vote for each of the candidates until it is clear that we have a successful nominee for board president. So, at this time, I'd like to open the floor for nominations for Board of Education President. Mr. Moses nominates Mr. Acetola.
I second.
Are there any other nominations for board president? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to close nominations and cast a unanimous ballot for Mr. Carl Acetola as member of the president of the Board of Education. Motion by Mr. Bruno.
Second.
Second by Ms. Capiello. Any discussion? Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Ms. Capiello.
Yes.
Ms. Higley.
Yes.
Ms. Lavin.
Yes.
Mr. Messinger.
Yes.
Mr. Moses.
Yes.
Mr. Parisi.
Yes.
Ms. Sutera.
Yes.
Mr. Acetola.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. (applause)
I'd really like to thank the board once again for the confidence they gave me I was board president last year, and I'm going to make this very quick, but certainly it is extremely important to recognize that I'm looking out at the audience, and this is the biggest audience ever for the inauguration of a president, period, in Freehold Regional High School District, period. And I would love to just recognize a few people in the audience. The former board member for Colts Neck District is here in attendance tonight. Vincent, would you stand up, please?[553.12][553.12](applause) Thank you for your service, even though I helped you quite a bit, like I did with SATs. My wife, Lee, is next to me, and we've been married for 28 years today, today, January 6th.[574.04][574.04](applause) Now, here's a guy to her right, and his name is Mr. Parisi, but he wants me to call him Lou, and he was a teacher in the Colts Neck School District, and my son Vincent had him as a schoolteacher and band member, and he said, "You have to meet this guy. He's a terrific piano player," and I have a Steinway D in my house that was used in Carnegie Hall. So, Mr. Parisi said, "Okay, I'll come over and play one piece for you, then I gotta go," and he was there till 3:00 AM in the morning, and I would just name piece after piece, and out of his head, he could play anything. Recently, I had Olga Kern, who won the gold medal, which is the highest honor in amateur piano, in the Van Kleiberg competition. Mr. Parisi sat down and played four hands with her, which was just a phenomenal day, and he is a wonderful person that had a tremendous influence on my life and also on Vincent's life, who now runs the National Youth Orchestra of China, which is 105 of the best musicians in the world at this point. So, age 14 to 21, and that's a result of the influence of Mr. Parisi. Now, last but certainly, not least, last but certainly, and I have to mention, Mr. Parisi, the real Mr. Parisi, can you stand up, please? Because you were a teacher in this district, and when Vincent was applying to the Ivy League schools, I said, "Why don't you bring your papers over to Mr. Parisi to take a look at?" He was a Latin teacher and also an English teacher, and what year did you retire, Mr. Parisi, from this district? 91? 91. And he looked at Vincent's paper and said, "I don't have to change a word on this," and I knew that Vincent would then be successful when I got that critique of his paper. And Mark Parisi's wife is sitting to his right. So, I just wanted to recognize people that are really very, very important in my life, and 28 years, that's a long time. I mean, oh, I have to tell one story. About 10 years ago, I would come to board meetings, and people wouldn't know who I was. What is this guy? Comes dressed in a suit? Who is he? And so, I'd come home, and I'd be all excited, you know, it's Colts Neck, what goes on in Colts Neck, really. So, I'd tell my wife, and she'd be watching TV, and she said to me, "Why don't you join a bowling league or something?" And here I am, as president of the board. So, with that, I really am pleased and proud to be working with the great educators in this district, and thank everybody for working here. And Charlie, thank you. You always give me the advice on what I do.[775.23][775.23](applause)
I want to go to that floor for pretty close. Thank you. Okay, I think I should take nominations for vice president, and could I start that off, Shawn?
Yes.
I would like to nominate Jennifer Sutera. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none?
So, it would be a motion to close nominations and instruct the board secretary to cast a unanimous ballot for Jen Sutera for the office of vice president of the Board of Education.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Ms. Capiello.
Yes.
Ms. Higley.
Yes.
Ms. Lavin.
Yes.
Mr. Messinger.
Yes.
Mr. Moses.
Yes.
Ms. Sutera.
Yes.
Mr. Acetola.
Yes, definitely.
Thank you, everyone.[838.13][838.13](applause) I'd just like to acknowledge, my mayor is here, Jack McElroy, and committee woman, Carrie Music, music, thank you for coming. And thank you, everyone.
Mark, at this point, would you give the ethics presentation, and then after that, we're going to go into executive session for a short period.
Not a problem. Thank you, Mr. Board President. Congratulations to all the newly sworn-in board members, and welcome back, everybody. Best of a good year. As we do each year, we do the ethics presentation. It does not take the place of your annual training by school boards, so you still do have to do that, I'm sorry to tell you. You will find at your spot a packet at the end of the presentation. I would ask, please, that you sign the single sheet and return it to Mr. Boyce, so that we have it for the record that we did have our annual required discussion of the School Ethics Act. It's labeled, tab one is the presentation that you're going to see. I'm not going to read every slide to you. A lot of this is referenced. For those of you that have been here for quite some time, you're going to be very familiar with a lot of this. The second tab is the actual School Ethics Act itself. All 10 provisions, we'll step through those, and I will give you concrete examples as to how other members have been violated that or found not to have violated that within the last year or so. And then the last tab is the entire School Ethics Act itself. So, if you feel so inclined, you have everything there at your fingertips. So, with that being said, just as a very quick overview, the Board of Education governs the school district, is charged with high-level policymaking. The three words you will hear drilled into you is policy planning and appraisal. It is the only body that can enter into contracts or other binding agreements such as settlement agreements. Individual administrators have no authority, only this body, and this body only acts when it is in session. So, it is a body of limited decision-making power. A lot of times, and this has been clarified and established by statute in cases, that the board itself cannot act without the recommendation of the superintendent. So, nobody gets hired, nobody gets fired, nobody gets transferred, nobody gets removed without the recommendation of the superintendent. There's other limitations on how the board can act. The most important thing to remember is, when we are not in session, only the board president has authority to make statements on behalf of the school district, and when we're not together, we can't act. So, we act together as one body. So, the code of ethics is 10 provisions, and they're up there. I give like little synopsis, little ways to remember them, boil it down. What you'll see on each slide is, I give you the actual code provision, and what's nice is, the commissioner of education tells us exactly the evidence of a violation, so that's what appears beneath it. So, if an ethics charge is filed, that and only that is what the commissioner would look for, excuse me, not commissioner, the School Ethics Commission would look for to see if there was a violation. So, the first one is, kind of common sense, will uphold and enforce all laws and rules and regulations of the State Board of Education, the Commissioner, and the State of New Jersey. We're not going to go rogue. We're going to act what is on the books. So, some of these you'll kind of find entertaining. A board member violated this when they attempted to issue unilaterally a rice notice to a board employee without following proper procedure. Rice notices are administrative function. Board members do not have the authority to issue rice notices on their own. Another one, the board president violated this provision when he took it upon himself to call somebody following a board meeting, where they were hired, there was a roll call vote, formally retained, and he called the person up and said, "Never mind, you're not hired because I told the superintendent to take it off the agenda," and he didn't listen to it. Again, trying to see how that's circumventing the law and a board member acting on their own. And please, I should have mentioned this, if there are any questions, do not have to wait to the end. Feel free to ask them now. The second one, again, staying in the common sense, we're here for the educational welfare of the students. We're here to maintain the public schools that meet the needs of all kids, regardless of ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. Okay? These are very basic ones. Here, you see violations when board members act in ways that is inconsistent with that mission. They're here for personal grudges or personal attacks, be it to settle old vendettas from years gone by or to right perceive wrongs in their mind. So, here's an example. A board member violated the code when he decided to release an ethics complaint that he had filed against another board member to the media so as to embarrass the other board member. Another way this was found to have been violated, excuse me, not violated, another school district asked for an advisory opinion, and advisory opinion is something that you can obtain from the School Ethics Commission, which is the body that would make a decision on an ethics complaint. And there was a question because a board member who used to work for the school district and had been fired by the superintendent and the board, and had filed previous ethics charges against the superintendent and the board, ran and was successfully elected to the Board of Education. There was a question as to whether or not, is that person coming on for the educational welfare of the student, or is that person coming on to settle some old scores and some vendettas? The Ethics Commission made it very clear, well, you were elected, but you're coming in tainted, and therefore you are not allowed to have any role or any input in anything regarding the superintendent, the evaluation, the employment, and the terms of conditions. Terms and conditions. So, you see kind of how, you know, they take this very seriously. Number three, board members' action is limited to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and the board will frame policies and it will not dictate them. It will work together to develop them. How has this been violated? Well, you see, this is where you have board members kind of go off script a little bit. You had a board member decide to conduct an onsite visit to a candidate for assistant superintendent, to go visit and watch a candidate for assistant superintendent vacancy without the permission of the other board. Again, going rogue, that's not policymaking, that's not playing, that's appraisal. Those of you that have been on the board for a while know that there have been a lot of conflicting ethics decisions about volunteering. All of you are here because you are volunteers. You are giving your time, your time away from your family, to help the community, to help maintain the school system. The Ethics Commission has, for whatever reason, there was a real pendulum swing, starting in 2013 and really continuing into about 2017, where they, it started out with an absolute prohibition, okay, they do not want board members participating or volunteering in the school districts in any way, which is kind of contrary to who and what board members are, because you are volunteering your time and you are invested. It went so far that, you know, there was concerns whether or not board members could come and speak at Career Day, or whether they could be the class mom or the PTO president. I'm happy to tell you that the Commission has backed off of that, and they have established some clear guidance now that they've stuck with for at least the last two years, with dealing with what type of volunteering is appropriate. Really, what they're looking for is contact with students, contact with staff. If it is consistent, where you are giving directives to students or to staff, that's problematic. If it's singular use, you're coming in on a Career Day, you're the classroom mom, or, you know, we're not going to have those here at the high school level, but you are involved in the PTO, that is not a problem. If you have any questions with regard to this, please don't hesitate to ask me. I'll happily help guide you through that. This is another big one. We always see this kind of come up because a lot of times in the corporate world, we'll report members that, not necessarily in public employment, and in the private world or the corporate world, exit interviews are big. They're buzzwords, they're big for culture and what's going on and feeling through it. And there was a big push a number of years ago amongst board members to try to bring that into the school district and as a way to maybe circumvent the superintendent, because the superintendent or chief school administrator is the end-all deal. That is the chief executive officer, that is the person who makes the decisions. And there was this concern, if we are having board members now sitting and having exit interviews with staff that are leaving, that was undermining the superintendent. So, the Ethics Commission stepped in and actually issued a decision saying that board members are not to participate in any exit interviews of any staff, with one exception, the superintendent, because that is the only employee that the Board of Education deals with and evaluates itself. Number four, I will carry out my responsibilities not to administer to schools, but together with board members who see that they are well-run. You're starting to see a little bit of a pattern here in terms of policy planning and appraisal, not managing the schools. Here, you know, the first case was one of those older volunteering cases. Why was this one a problem? Because the board member volunteered for the play and had supervisory authority over staff and students over a prolonged period of time. So, that is why that was problematic. The next one kind of jumps out at you. The board member violated this provision by instructing the superintendent not to allow a graduating senior to participate in the graduation ceremonies due to safety concerns. Now, those concerns may have been well-founded based on the facts, but it is not the board president's or any board member's job to dictate to the superintendent how the schools are to be run. Kind of, you see more of these, you know, kind of more micromanaging. A board member violated this provision when they unilaterally visited the school, took pictures of open windows, went to the board office bathroom, and then talked to reporters about it. Again, circumventing, getting outside of that policy planning and appraisal. And again, the other part here, again, another hammering at home, that there are to be no exit interviews by board members, not even observe them, not even be in the room. Again, this has not been as big of an issue lately, but there was a real push in around 2010 timeframe for the exit interview process to be incorporated. Number five, no personal promises or private action. Authority rests with the board. You guys heard me say to you that we act as a body. When we are not together, nobody has any authority. You can't make personal promises or any action that may compromise the board. Here, a board member violated this when they got drunk down in Long Beach Island at a bar, saddled up next to somebody who was a candidate, said, "You know what? You'd be a great assistant superintendent. In fact, you apply, and I'm going to see to it that you get the job." Again, that's a violation. Another way that this was violated, a board member who is employed as an aide in a private daycare that contracted with the school is not allowed, okay, to be involved in any votes regarding any business with that daycare, between the board and that daycare, because it would indirectly benefit that board member. This is a real doozy. This was perhaps the biggest decision within the last year. This was a nasty, nasty case. A board member was found to have violated this action when they were pulled over during a traffic stop. Officer comes up to the window, says license and registration, board members meet, response is, "I'm a board member." Police officer says, "That's great, that's wonderful, license and registration." Board member decides, well, you know, you know, makes comments that she hates police officers because they hurt, these are quotes from the decision, black people, and you requesting my license and registration is a, you can see the expletive insult, threatened to make calls to the council president right there, who she claimed was a personal friend, and after being told that the ticket could not be ripped up, which is what she was insisting upon, that she'll call the council president and your skinhead chief of police as well. The township administrator was so bothered by this action that they sent a formal memo to the board president and the Board of Education complaining about this board member's conduct. The School Ethics Commission definitely found that this was a violation. They skipped reprimand, which is always the first step. They skipped censure, which is the second step, and went right to an immediate six-month suspension of the board. The next step would have been removal. It could go that far, but you can see how egregious this one was. Number six, I refuse to surrender my independent judgment to any special interests or partisan groups. Okay? Again, kind of similar to the last one in terms of not making any personal promises or seeking any gain. Here, a board member who was also an employee of a company that sold vocabulary books was not permitted to vote or be involved in the selection of those textbooks for the district, because the perception could be that the board member was voting yes in order to get a contract with their employer. However, that being said, board members do not surrender their rights to participate in the political process. You are able to endorse candidates, whether it be for local municipal elections and even for Board of Education elections. You are still permitted to do that, so long as you make it clear that you are making the endorsement as a private citizen and not on behalf of the board itself. You know, board members who have individuals that are relatives or immediate family members, which we will get into, cannot participate in the search or cannot which we will get into, cannot participate in the search or cannot be involved in any aspect of the superintendent's employment. We'll go through all that, that's usually one of the more regulated areas of the Ethics Act itself, and I try to help you guys out as much as I can in advance with those, because this can be a little tricky. Number seven, I will hold matters confidential, which disclosed will injure individuals of the school. This is kind of, we maintain confidentiality, we have discussions in executive session, and those discussions are confidential and must remain so, most of the time under either state or federal law. Here, this was a case this past year. The biggest thing that we are seeing board members trip over lately is social media. Don't use it. My, my advice, don't use it at all. We had a board member last year who was censured, again, that's one step from removal, was censured for responding to and retweeting a social media post that was sent to them about an alleged student discipline incident that happened at the school. So it was an allegation that there was a fairly high-profile incident that happened at one of the schools in the school district. A concerned citizen turns around, reaches out to a board member via social media and says, oh my gosh, do you know anything about this? The board member turns around and says, yes, I know all about it, and here's exactly what happened, and this is the exact school, and the student was suspended for 10 days and we're having a form of expulsion hearing. Lots of problems. It violated the student's confidentiality, revealed items that are not to be public available. Another decision from last year, this, this was a, I thought this one was good because it shows that, you know, the maintaining the confidentiality piece doesn't apply to matters that we discuss publicly outside. So in this case, there was an allegation that the board president violated the provision because there was a discussion amongst the board in executive session. There was a discussion with this particular school district whether or not you're going to buy Chromebooks. What are we going to do with Chromebooks? Are we going to buy more, are we going to initiate a one-to-one initiative? The board president said, you know what, we're going to have this discussion at the next public meeting. In between then, the superintendent says, uh-uh, I make the call, we're not having the discussion because I'm not recommending moving forward with an initiative. It was found that a member of the public filed an ethics complaint, making an allegation that the board president had lied to the public because there was supposed to be this public discussion, and there wasn't one because candidly, it was ended at the superintendent's level, which would be appropriate step. Eight, I will vote to appoint the best qualified candidates after consideration of the recommendation of the superintendent, okay? As I said before, nobody gets hired, nobody gets fired without the superintendent's recommendation. That doesn't mean it's a blanket check, okay? You guys are, you are in a symbiotic relationship. You can't withhold your support for arbitrary, capricious, or illegal reasons. So you have to have a good reason if you're voting no, of going against the superintendent's Advisory opinion clarified this, that prior to the recommendation of the superintendent, board members are to have no role in the selection of candidates, other than that for position of principal. What this was, what this was drilling down on and clarifying, boards of ed used to have personnel committees, and for certain high-level positions, whether it be director of special ed, a building principal, a, a business administrator, or director of curriculum, board members would want to be involved. They would say, well, this is a high-level position, we need to have input, you need to bring three candidates before us in executive session so we can interview them. The Ethics Commission said, absolutely not. It is the job of the superintendent to come to you with the recommended candidate, and it is not a situation where you get to pick from the candidates. It is the superintendent's recommendation and recommendation only. Yes?
Real fast question. You had said that other than principal, I think you misspoke, other than superintendent?
Other than, yes, correct, I'm sorry. The only position that the board has a role in selecting is the superintendent. Everybody else has got to go through the superintendent. Sorry about that, thank you for catching me. Number nine, I will support and protect school personnel and the proper performance of their duties. This is one that came out within the last year. Here, a board member who was himself a 30-plus-year educator and administrator violated the code when, during a board meeting, he stepped out into the hall, he took the director of curriculum with him and said to the director of curriculum, hey, by the way, if the superintendent job opens up, would you be interested? That was found to be a violation because not only was there no position to fill, because the superintendent was employed, that, that individual was the superintendent's subordinate, and it undermines the authority of the chain of command, undermines the authority of the superintendent. So that was found to be a violation. Another way, another kind of entertaining way this was found to be violated, a board member sent an email to the superintendent, copied the business administrator, and every other board member that was threatening and intimidating, and it asked the superintendent to provide an accounting of all of her personal leave. Again, you see how that's not supporting personnel in their, in their proper function of their, their duties. This one I kind of bring up each year. Again, I, I bring it up because it just highlights the dangers of social media. The president of the board violated the code by posting comments on Facebook page with a link to a picture of the superintendent, quote, "Now if we could only do something about local terrorists that destroy dreams and burn futures." That gentleman was removed. Supporting personnel, though, does not mean circumventing other, other federal laws. This was one that actually came out late last year. A board member and superintendent did not violate this provision of the code when the superintendent allowed the parent of a special ed student to observe a classroom, which was proposed as a placement, without consulting the teacher, and the board did not violate the code by denying the grievance that the association filed. Why? Because under special ed law, parents are allowed to observe a proposed program. So, lastly, this is proceed through the proper channels. You must refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer, who will act on the com, and you as the board will only act on the complaints at a public meeting after a failure of the administrative channels. Kind of self-explanatory, a board member violated the code by going to the principal directly in connection with a parent complaint, because the board member didn't like the superintendent's response. Another board member violated this by, by not providing letters of complaints that he got to the superintendent, because he did not like the superintendent's management of issues, and he tried to cir, go around the superintendent and go to the individual employees. Bottom line is that it is the responsibility of the administration to administer the schools. And board members' jobs are planning appraisal, policy, planning, and appraisal. Keep those things in mind. The rest of the slides are really reference slides for you that, that I will give to you, and I'm just going to hit them highly, very, very quickly, high-level. Conflicts, which is a, a big area in terms of participation in negotiations and certain personnel actions. What I try to do to help, each one of you got a draft copy of a ethics conflict chart that I put together. I put it together based on information I was able to get. I will sit with each one of the new members to see if there's anything that we have to change or revise, if there's anybody that I missed, you will see. We focus on relatives and immediate family members as those terms are defined. Sadly, I may have to get a little intrusive in terms of who's related to you, and please don't think I'm prying into your personal lives, I'm doing so really to protect you and to make sure that we don't run afoul of either the school ethics provisions or the nepotism regulations. Really simple, high-level answer is, if you have a relative or an immediate family member that is employed here in the district, there are a number of matters that you must ethically abstain from and cannot be a part of, whether it be sitting on a negotiations team, voting on a contract, or voting on actions relating to certain personnel, and I will walk all of you through those. If you have somebody that is a relative or an immediate family member that works in another public school district, there might be some other prohibitions in terms of your participation, and I again will work with you to make sure that you understand that. I give this all to you, breakdown of participation here, so that when we sit, you kind of understand why I'm asking these questions and why I'm, I'm, I do these charts, because you can see, they can get, they can get complicated sometimes. I always check the agendas for you as a backup to make sure that nobody misses any resolutions. If you have, this is becoming more and more prevalent, if you have a relative or an immediate family member that works for a staffing company, source for teachers, any of the Educational Services commissions, Insight, there's a couple other ones out there, that is not a conflict that would prevent you from participating in employment discussions within the district. You may have to abstain on the vote for that company, but it will not knock you out. On the flip side, though, if you have, and this is kind of contradictory, but these are the rules we have to play by, if you have a relative or an immediate family member that is employed within the district as a substitute, meaning the district does not subcontract out its substituting services, and we call the people ourselves, we maintain our list, Freehold Regional does not subcontract out those services. So this would be something here. So if you have a family member that is employed as a substitute, whether a per diem one or a long-term one, that could cause some ethical concerns in certain actions. And again, if that's the case, I will sit with you and help you guide you through that. If you are a member of a non-traditional educational union, AFL-CIO, or any of the other Teamsters or, or private unions, meaning not NJEA, not NJPSA, that will not per se prohibit you from participating in negotiations. I don't think we have that issue here on the board, but I just wanted to bring it up. Doctrine and necessity, you may hear it come up from time to time, we have never, and I've been here since 2011, had to invoke that. And looking at the conflicts on the board as it presently sits, I do not see any instance where we'll be invoking that this year. The simplest way to explain it is, if we have so many people conflicted that we can't conduct business, we are allowed to conduct business in a very limited fashion by invoking the doctrine. We've never had to do it here since I've been here, and I do not foresee any instance where we would do that this year, but I'm required to talk to you about it and explain what it is. I talked about the interview process, board members are not allowed, and I sometimes get questions about, well, how come? Why can't we participate if we're going to be asked to vote? How come we can't sit in and hear the candidate for ourselves? I give a pretty lengthy breakdown for you of the advisory opinion from the Ethics Commission, and they have not wavered from this. They do not, they do not want board members having any role in the interviewing process. Volunteering, I give you a complete breakdown of how and what they look for in terms of that degree of control, degree of contact with kids, but again, I'm happy to sit with you and talk with you about those. I think my batteries might be dying. This is, this, this still bothers me, this provision, but they reaffirmed it last year, which is why I bring it up. We just had that whole discussion about you can't volunteer, you can't volunteer your time, you can't have limited contact with kids. However, there was a couple board, board members who got elected who were bus drivers, and they were, oh, they were bus drivers for a private company that contracted with the board, and there was a question, well, wait a second, if we can't volunteer, how can we drive the bus and possibly be disciplining the kids for misbehaving on the bus? We have to have interaction with the principal, if there's a problem, with the teachers? And the Ethics Commission said, no, that, that, that's okay. So it looks to me like, you know, if you're, you're getting paid, it's your job, contact with the kids is okay, but if you're not getting paid and you're trying to volunteer for some reason, that's, that's not okay, which makes no sense. And this was perhaps one of the biggest decisions issued last year, and I just want to point it out, we've never had this issue here. This was the lone wolf. There was a board member who was not satisfied with the process that was undertaken with respect to the superintendent's contract. They voiced their concerns at the public board meeting. They voted no at the public board meeting. They then proceeded to make speeches at the public meeting. And then they went so far as to file a complaint against the board itself, seeking, well, you know what, if I can't get people to agree with me, I'm going to go take my own action. That's a violation of the Ethics Act, and this language encapsulates it, that if a lone board member, board member is unable to convince fellow board members of their position, then the board member's recourse is to address the issue in public, vote against a resolution or action that they may disagree with. The recourse is not for the board members to take matters into their own hands and file proceedings against the board. So, very, very strong, strong language. And then the last thing is, Oprah, I would just caution you that you are, any emails that you receive or send on behalf of board business is subject to Oprah, which is the Open Public Records Act. If you are communicating via text messages relating to board business, that could potentially be subject to the Open Public Records Act. So I would ask you, please, you all have Freehold Regional High School District email accounts, please use those and use those only for board business. And that is it, I apologize, Dr. Sampson, it was a little over. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I, here's a resource for you guys, I gave you my email and phone number.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Tascano. May I have a motion to go into executive session? Yes?
Yes.
Is he here tonight, or? No, he's not. But well noted, not a problem. Yes, thank you, thank you for that. And with that, may I have a motion to go into executive?
Can I just have a quick moment, I wanted to, is that okay?
Yeah, not a problem.
First, I just wanted to congratulate my fellow board members that got re-elected and stayed with the big league about a point for tonight. I look forward to working with everybody. Tremendous honor to be elected up here and to be working with everyone. I have great respect for everybody. I also want to recognize some of my family that are here tonight. I'll start with my father, he's sitting in front looking at me. I want to thank you for all of your guidance. You're a former educator and I appreciate everything that you've done in supporting me for my life. My mother's visiting from Florida, she came up here for this special occasion. My mother is a French citizen and she's a very cultured woman who has taught me about humanity and appreciation for her culture, and I thank you for that. Sitting next to her and hiding behind my dad is my wife, Sandra. I want to wish you a happy birthday today, honey, I love you. So thank you for coming out here tonight to, for this special occasion. And last, I want to recognize my grandfather, he's sitting over there, that is, as we've already recognized. My grandfather is a tremendous inspiration to me, and I am so blessed that for 93 years he's been alive, and for my 40 years he's been there, and he's always been a huge supporter and advocate for me. And in honor of my grandfather tonight, I'm wearing his jacket that he wore when he graduated from St. Peter's University in the 1940s as an homage to him, so.
No more.
So, that's right on cue for my father. But, Pop, I love you, thank you for everything, and I'm sorry that my grandmother couldn't be here, nice and not feeling well, but she's here in spirit, but thank you.
And, and Mr. Parisi, I, I forgot to mention about you being a World War II veteran, and I got a call last night from our friend Colonel James Manning, who could not be here. Had President Eisenhower listened to his way of running the war, we wouldn't have Rocket Man today, but so much for that, I'm sorry, Mrs. Sharp, she's directly related to President Eisenhower, but I appreciate all of the work that you continue to do for the veterans, and it's so much appreciated by, by everyone, and thank you for the guidance that you've given me throughout the years. And Mr. Bruno, I, I had cut you off, you were just about ready to say something. Yeah, I thought you were about, Mr.? Yeah, why not? got a call last night from our friend Colonel James Manning, who could not be here. Had President Eisenhower listened to his way of running the war, we wouldn't have Rocket Man today. But so much for that, I'm sorry, Mrs. Sharp, she's directly related to President Eisenhower. But I appreciate all of the work that you continue to do for the veterans, and it's so much appreciated by everyone. And thank you for the guidance that you've given me throughout the years. And Mr. Bruno, I had cut you off, you were just about ready to say something. Yeah, I thought you were about, Mr. Yeah, why not? Mrs. Higley, didn't I hear a rumor that Mr. Parisi was once your teacher also? Okay, so if there's no more, may I have a motion to go into executive session? Okay. All those in favor?
And the board will return in ten minutes, no later than 8:10.
Okay, we're ready to restart the meeting. Announcement of adequate notice of meeting pursuant to the open meetings Act, Chapter 231, public laws of 1975. This meeting notice was sent to the Asbury Park Press on April 18, 2019, and it has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press, issue of April 22, 2019. All the gifts and reports of the townships and boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified, and the requirements of posting of notices have been met on April 18, 2019. Could we stand for the election?
I believe in the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Mr. Tuscano, are there any changes to the executive agenda you wish to note?
Yes, two, Mr. President, with respect to exception number four, the negotiation update, it was a negotiation update on FREA negotiations. And in box number seven, there's an update on the school funding litigation.
Thanks, Mr. Tuscano. May I have a motion to approve items C1 through C6? Any discussion? Roll call, please, Sean.
Mr. Bruno? Wait, 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 this is all, this is not the minutes, this is the reorganization. It's okay. It's, yeah, just for point of clarity, this is not the meeting minutes, this is items C1 to C6. This is our annual motions that we are statutory required to adopt at the reorganization meeting. If any of the new members are uncomfortable because you're seeing this for the first time, you are certainly welcome to, and if you're able to abstain, you can move those over to the conference with the president.
All right, so, yeah, so in other words, you can abstain of invoking, as I call it out. We're going to do a roll call for C1 through C6. What, Sean?
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Tabby?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Mr. Parisi?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Rafferty?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of December 16, 2019, regular minutes? Discussion? Any discussion? Sean, roll call, please.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Tabby?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Rafferty?
Yes. Communications are on file in the office of the Board Secretary. Report, superintendent's report, can I yield the floor to Mr. Sampson?
Thank you, Mr. Asatola. So congratulations to the three elected board members and the appointed board member, Ms. Capiello, Ms. Lavin, Ms. Higley, and Mr. Parisi. This is, has been an unbelievable board, and happy to have you here serving the communities. Just one note before my report, I do just want to send, on behalf of myself and the administration, well wishes to Mr. Bill Bruno, who's underwent open heart surgery, and I know he's been a struggle, and I'm not going to put Mr. Bruno on the spot, but I do just want to publicly acknowledge, many of us have worked alongside and with Mr. Bruno for years, and he's an unbelievable human being, and he's certainly in our thoughts and prayers. As far as my report, a couple of brief items, obviously, we're just a couple days back into the new school year, our eighth grade orientations are scheduled to run this week and next week. Couple things, I've talked to the principals, that night might look a little bit differently. We're going to message our parents that some of the things traditionally that, you know, we talk about saying, you know, sign up for your child's electives or this course, you know, the truth of the matter is, and I've talked to a couple board members about this, is that all aspects of our academic program are going to be impacted, whether that's from class size, whether that's from what we offer and when we offer it, if that's delaying opportunities for students, and in the case of, you know, things like electives, they might look like students are only juniors and seniors can take that, may have been able to take it as freshmen and sophomores, we're going to stagger that. But the academic program as a whole, as a result of S2, is going to be impacted here. That's larger class sizes, that's fewer opportunities for children. We pride ourselves on being a comprehensive high school. We're going to certainly do everything in our power to maintain the elements of this district that have made us an exceptional school system, that provides unbelievably rich opportunities for all of our students, regardless of what their interest or aptitude or passion is about. I think we have something for every child in this district, and we've been proud of that. But with looking at anywhere between six and seven million dollar reduction next year, and then a similar reduction for the year after that, and a similar reduction for a year after that, those eighth graders who are coming into our system are certainly going to feel that impact. It will start right away next year with some pretty stringent changes to busing, first and foremost, you know, which unfortunately will, you know, certainly be an extra burden on our parents and our guardians, and we're well aware of that. But the scope of the reductions are going to be extreme. So those eighth grade messaging from the principals to what is going to be available, you know, my directive to them is to be honest with our school community and to talk to them about S2 a bit, and to let them know that that will certainly impact their child's education here in the Freehold Regional High School District. And, you know, there's a lot of, you know, the simple argument out there is overfunded, underfunded, declining student population, and I had a conversation with Mr. Messinger this weekend about this, and Ms. Capiello as well, last week about a position that was being abolished here. And so I went back to 2015, so five school years, and took a look at how many positions we've eliminated as our student population has declined. And since 2015, we've eliminated over 30 positions here, including two administrative positions. So to say that we haven't been responsible with our staffing and lived high on the hog is absolutely false, because we've drawn down our staff in conjunction with that declining population, which is about 1 to 1.5% a year. So if all of the students that we lost in the past five years magically appeared on our front doors tomorrow, we'd still be losing millions of dollars, because it's a flawed funding formula. That's the issue. And we're going to make sure that the parents of the incoming eighth graders and parents, particularly in the K8s, who are sending their children to us, those are the folks who are going to feel it the most, because you're going to have cut after cut after cut for a number of years. The Support Our Students group, of which we're a part of, there's about 95 districts strong at this point in time. We're working very collaboratively over the past couple of weeks to develop some more specific action, to bring the message, obviously, to legislators about the impact of S2, but broader messaging to the community. We've revised our Oprah request of the state for the funding formula in and of itself. You know, the truth of the matter is that there may not be a specific formula that tells you what each community does, and that's even worse, because we suspect strongly that, you know, this aid is simply backfilled. And the burden that's falling on the Freehold Regional High School District, it's not so simple to say that we are undertaxing our school community. It's much more nuanced than that. It is a massive redistribution of wealth across the state, and some school districts are going to be harmed, potentially to a degree that they can't recover from. I've said it over and over again, the districts that were largely underfunded for eight to nine years under the previous regime deserve every penny of the funding that they receive. There is new fund in the budget, so it shouldn't be a zero-sum game that you had underfunded, overfunded, then you kick the can to somewhere else, and you have new underfunded, overfunded, which is a problematic term. But to solve the problem that you have for some districts at the expense of other districts and create the exact same problem that you're coming out from is, doesn't make much sense. So we're going to continue with our advocacy efforts, we're going to continue to put the word out, we're going to continue to message our public about what the impact is to our communities and our student experience here in the Freehold Regional High School District. And that concludes my report.
I have a question.
Yep.
I've been seeing that Tom's River's really taking the lead, sending kids down to Trenton bus convoys, et cetera, et cetera. When you've talked to them, is that superintendent feeling he's just beating his head against the wall, or is there any kind of tangible, glimmer of hope that he could pull out of all the advocacy that these people are doing in Tom's River?
Yeah, you know, there's, there's strength in numbers, and I think that a lot of the districts that are on that other side of funding, you know, we're very involved with the SOS group, we've come together to talk to each other about what's working in our communities, how to continue to message, sharing letters with one another, joining together, obviously, in the lawsuit, working collaboratively. I think that, I think that everyone is hopeful that folks will realize the unintended consequences of this might be way more extreme than they anticipated. And I think that we all feel that if you don't continue to just message that over and over and over again, it's going to be subsumed by other things. You know, there's a large general election coming up in 2020, it's a presidential election year, there's a lot of room for attention and opportunity for, you know, some real dialogue. You know, each, the difficulty with the funding issue to begin with is even the districts who are experiencing extreme negative consequences of S2 are experiencing those in very different ways, because of the nuanced way in which the formula plays out in every community. So some districts have other issues with pilots and things like that, where there's, you know, might be a lot more money available. So not everybody's issue is the same as well, but I think what we have done is managed to have a regular chain of communication, a regular meeting protocol, form the SOS group, of which we have a number of subcommittees, the Legislative Committee, Political Action Committee, which I'm heading at this point in time, and are able to draw from one another in terms of how we approach this. Definitely different philosophies on what the best way might be, but certainly common goals.
We won't know anything for April budget hearing anyway, but nothing could happen before then?
No, so we're actively looking at huge chunk items right now, but the, you know, the rubber won't hit the road until we get our actual state aid figures. We have an idea, we know, you know, we anticipate, and Mr. Boyce, you can chime in if I'm off, but we anticipate somewhere between six and seven million dollars. That could be a little bit better, it could be a little bit worse. If it's worse, you know, that's a huge scope, but what people aren't also understanding is we were already 1.4 million dollar reduction, 3.8 million dollar reduction, now we're coming to that point. You know, and we've said it over and over again, in a regionalized model, that obviously works with the low per pupil cost, that's thousands under similar districts. So, but no, what that, what that cut looks like is a fundamentally different school system than what we have presently, to the negative for children.
With the orientations coming up soon, at the day of the law, it's really hard to attend to who we've got to feel for.
Yeah, you know, the unfortunate reality is, folks are going to notice when things are reduced, you know, and it's just the natural way of things, is that no matter how much messaging we're doing, social media, letters, calls home, letters to the editor, we have a whole website devoted to how you can advocate for this school system. At the end of the day, when the face of that school system really starts to change for individuals directly, I think that's when they will realize just how different it might be. And that's, that's an unfortunate, that's an unfortunate reality. You know, what we've asked over and over again is hold folks harmless and take a pause before you move through the phase in of S2. And study, take some time to study the formula and to study the impacts, which they have not done. You know, we've asked that of the Department of Education, we've asked legislators to sponsor legislation as such. You know, that, you know, this became, you know, sort of the law, and the way that schools were going to be funded, and we've just moved forward. No one's ever taken a step back to actually examine what this is going to look like in certain communities. It's a tough place to be.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson. I see that we have no board reports for this meeting, we have nobody on the list for public participation. Mr. Boyce, are there any changes to the agenda that you wish to note?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion, then, to approve items H1 through L2? Second, it's called, any discussion?
Yes. Yes.
And this, circling back to some things Dr. Sampson had mentioned earlier, H9 abolishment of positions, could you, you know, give your rationale for that? How did that come about out of all the positions individually?
So that's a very specific case. We had an individual who had put in for their retirement but was taking a medical leave of absence at the start of the school year. And so one of the things that we'll always do is we fill that position in the interim for the school system, but once that individual came off of the medical leave... for the school system, but once that individual came off of the medical leave and was set to retire, we abolish that position, because if we don't abolish that position, there are rights to that position potentially down the road. And so what you'll see, particularly every April, is any non-renewal we have or retirement, if we're not filling that, we always abolish it so that there are no long-term rights to the position. And so this was a very specific case in the district of someone who was on a medical but had put in their retirement papers.
Okay, Mrs. Capiolo, for the record, was it you who seconded the motion? Oh, Mrs. Sutera did that, okay, thank you. Is there, are there any members wishing to discuss old business? Oh, no, I did it again. We need to do the roll call. Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Capiolo?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mr. Glavine?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Asfalt?
Yes.
Okay, are there any members wishing to discuss old business? Any members wishing to discuss new business? May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Second? Thank you. All in favor?